Good evening, everyone. Welcome to Swanee County Board of County Commissioners meeting, Friday, 16, 2022. At this time, I'd like to get Commissioner Stapleton to give the invocation and the pledge of the God.
Hello, Mr. President. Lord, we just come before you tonight to do the business of the county. We ask you to please give us wisdom as we go through this process. Also, we ask you to look after our children as they have started their back-to-school year. We ask you to be with our first responders and our military throughout the world, protect them, protect the ones that protect us, and give us the freedom to do what we're doing here tonight. Christ name, we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we will move on to item number one, approval of minutes for the June 27, 2022 Emergency Operations Center Fabulation Meeting, August 2, 2022. Board meeting, August 3, Budget Workshop Day One, August 4, Budget Workshop Day Two. Is there any discussion or motion to approve? Motion by Commissioner Lynn, second by Commissioner Stapleton. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, same sign. Moving on to the consent agenda, we're going to pull items number five and six. It will be approved, or looking at items two, two through four, and seven and eight. Is there any discussion on those, or do I have a motion to approve? Motion by Commissioner Lynn, second by Commissioner Stapleton. All in favor, aye. All opposed, same sign. Item number five, approval of ship annual report and local housing incentive certification for closeout fiscal year 2019-2020. Mr. Pruvet.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll pull it from consent only because there's an additional certification that came from the SREC certifying to us before we certified to the state, and it's an additional document that just needs to be added. So I wanted to have the agenda, item B, approval of the report with that additional document that was procured by Mr. Roberts.
Any other discussion?
All for motion for approval, was that on?
Motion by Commissioner Stapleton, second by Commissioner Fleming. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries out. Item number six, approval of agreements with security safe for monthly security line of the year. Mr. Pruvet.
Again, Mr. Chairman, the, uh, has to be pulled because there's some language that included in each of the three agreements that are along there that needs to be tweaked just a bit. So what I would ask you to do is approve the item subject to approval of the language by a county attorney, confined with financial terms. I don't do, I'm not into that. It's just the other stuff.
Motion to approve. Motion by Commissioner Lynn, second by Commissioner Hale. All in favor, aye. All opposed, same sign.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
We've got a minute before 5:05. Does anybody have anything they'd like to share or add for a minute?
Oh, I can add something, Mr. Chairman. LTPT, Mr. North, Local Technology Planning Team. Is that right? We get all these acronyms, so I forget which one or which, but they got these little cards that they pass out to the schools, and I think he has some extras with him tonight. This is the Q, QR code to the speed test that we've been talking about, that we need to increase our percentage of completion for the EDO grant that we're working on. So if anybody or any of your businesses need this little QR code, it's a handy-dandy little thing to take you straight to the speed test. See Mr. North, he's got some more.
Commissioner, I'll go ahead. Questionnaire.
I was just going to say, Mr. Chairman, I had one too. What are the other alternatives to do that? Because I've been asked, I know Mr. North spoke of it one night in the meeting, it's on his page, that there were other places. Where else can we find this, Jimmy? Because I, I just keep sending one to your page, but I don't know if that's an overload, you need to get, I think Swanee Valley may have it on their page.
You'll make it.
Please. Swanee Valley has it on their page, so you can go to Swanee Valley Electric, and there's a link there. Go to my page, swaneecountyedo.com/speed. It's on, that address is on that card as well. If you pick up one of these cards, all you got to do is take your phone, click on it, it takes you straight there, or you can actually go to Florida Jobs, to Office of Broadband, there's about 15 different, but you can get there from there too. You can search it and find it. You know, we've been putting it in the paper as well. And again, this doesn't just tell Swanee County that if you take the test, I mean, it's not specific to just us. I mean, everybody needs to take the test, you know, in rural America, even these people from Columbia County.
Thank you.
It's just painting the picture of what is out there for the communities in Florida, as far as, you know, your up and down, what we're being able to talk about.
I give it to them every week.
It helps to educate government and everybody else.
Appreciate you bringing that up.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right, at this time, we will move on to item number nine at 5:05 PM. We're soon thereafter, as the matter can be heard, presentation of audit for fiscal year end of September 30, 2021. Mr. Powell.
Welcome. Great. It's always, it's a pleasure to be here and deliver the annual audit of Swanee County. We perform field work on the audit, frankly, basically throughout the year. We prepared the financial report, and first of all, a county audit is an audit of each constitutional officer, five, and the board, and then the compilation of those audits into the one report, which this year, Commissioner's had is 245 pages. It gets more pages added every year because of all of the regulatory bodies.
Mr. Powell, I interrupted you. Can I get your name and address for the record? I'm sorry.
Sure. Chris Richard.
I'm going to get you to talk a little bit louder.
Okay, great. Okay, great. Right, Chris Richard Powell, Allen Jones, CPA's, 1359 Southwest Main Boulevard, Lake City. Okay, so, and so, as always, I have prepared this handout that has the highlights of the audit, and I will go for that, and then be pleased to answer any questions, address any concerns of the county commissioners. Okay, so, in all the, on page eight to 10 is the audit opinion. It states that it's a complete audit of the county, the board, and the constitutional officers, was conducted in accordance with applicable auditing standards that include the financial auditing standards, the government auditing standards, federal single audit standards, and the state single audit standards. So there were four levels of required audit procedures. What you seek in an audit is a clean, unmodified opinion that states that the financial statements are an accurate reflection of how the county stood at the end of the year, what transpired financially during the year. You have that highest level of assurance, which is a good reflection on the quality of the financial records and practices of both the board and the five constitutional officers. On page 11 through 18 is a section entitled Management's Discussion and Analysis. This section contains some required overview financial information on the county. Due to the fact that it is derived from the financial statements, in the interest of time, I request that you read that section on your own, and I'll go directly to the pertinent financial statements. The first one being on page 23. So the county, obviously being a government, operates under governmental fund accounting principles. There are two types of funds. In Swanee, there is the governmental funds, which are where the main transactions are kept, and then there's enterprise funds, which are funds that operate like business and under those accounting principles. So on page 23 is the balance sheet of the governmental funds, and the first column there is the general fund, the main fund of the county. In this fund, total assets were $30,846,925. Total liabilities, $5,343,884. Fund balances under fund accounting and cash reserves. So the general fund had $25,503,41 in total reserves. There's various classes, classifications of restrictions, but if you look at the last amount, the unassigned fund balance, $21,202,241, is basically the unrestricted reserve of the county in total, which is under control of the Board of County Commissioners. Always look to see what percent of general fund expenditures that would pay for. In this year, it pays for 89%, about almost 11 months of expenditure, so that's a very healthy reserve, and it has been building over the last several years, and that's very commendable. Just the total of the governmental funds, of which there are 32, I think. Total assets, $57,878,251. Liabilities, $7.6 million. Total fund balances of the county as a whole are $50,242,817, but in these other funds are generally restricted type revenues, so most of those, the reserves in excess of $21 million have various restrictions on them. Okay, so the next statement on page 24 is a statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance for these funds. So for the general fund in this year, the revenues were $30,155,078. Expenditures and transfers, $23,737,291. So the increase in fund balance for this year was $6,417,787. So that is a 21.3% increase in comparison to the revenues. In the prior year, there was an increase of 4.9 million. So for the two years, you had excess and excess of, we're close to $11 million. Now, that came about primarily through the COVID-related funding that you received that hadn't been spent, so that type of funding was very beneficial to Swanee County. As to total governmental funds, the revenues were $57,282,090. Expenditures were about $50 million, so overall, the county was positive $7.3 million. So, and all of these numbers reflect that Swanee County isn't a small county anymore. You have, you know, when you're into $60 million, that's just real money, spent, uh, perceived and spent. Okay, so on page 26 to 30 are your enterprise, criteria funds. Now, these funds, the intent is to operate fully off of user charges. For that fact, they use utilized business accounting principles, you know, not fund accounting. You have three such funds. You have the solid waste collection, solid waste disposal, and the water plant fund. So on page 25, on slide nine, for these funds, a balance sheet is called a statement of net position. So for solid waste collection, total assets, $1,578,755. Total liabilities, $1,361,435. Net positions, kind of the net worth of these funds. Solid waste collection is the overall, $217,317. Disposal is $1,208,107. The water plant, because it received a lot of grant revenue in this year, is almost positive $6 million, so it's becoming a larger entity. On page 28, slide 10, yeah, little numbers. Okay, so the, here the intent is to operate off of user charges. So for collection, the, the net was negative 854,591. Solid waste disposal, it was negative 186,628. The water plant was 4.8 million, but that was due to grant revenue. So in these two funds, although you're recording depreciation, the user charges in this year really did not fully fund your expenses, so. Okay, so, the next slide on page 49, page 13 of the handout, is the table of your capital assets. And so for governmental assets, it's kind of like your general fund assets. The total at cost, $161,116,232. Cumulative depreciation, $75,659. The net, $85,456,454. So these assets are about 47% depreciated, and now this is, the depreciation is to true expense, but it's not, it's not recorded under fund accounting, but your assets at 47% depreciated is honestly slightly newer than the other counties of which I'm aware, so your assets are a little bit newer. Business-type assets, total cost, $14,315,374. Net, $7,347,882. They're about 48.7%. Overall, your assets are about 44% depreciated, which again, is a little bit newer than other counties, I'd say of your size, which I'm aware. And that's probably a reflection on the amount of consistent grant revenue that you perceive that's been spent on infrastructure. And compared with the prior year, the, the percent was 45.5%, so the, the lower that number goes means that you're kind of keeping up with appreciation. The next table, this table is on page 53, 56, is the debt and long-term liabilities of the county. Okay, so here's something kind of unusual. Your debt in this one, the long-term liabilities in this one year decreased $33,202,687. So how did that happen? FRS had a very good year in the prior year with the investments, and your FRS liability increased better than 50% in this one year. I've been mentioned at several meetings, so you'd say, you know, the contribution rates should lower because of that, but they went up. So your, your actual loans and leases, the total was 5.6 million. Compensated abscences, 3.1 million. OPEB is 6.8 million, and then the FRS liability for governmental funds, $11,325,772, which is much lower. Okay, on the business-type debt, the capital lease debt is only $108,621. Compensated abscences, 16,471. Here you have the landfill liability for post-closure, $1,381,042, and your FFRS liability is 389,743. So overall, you're both in the actual loan-type debt and in the employee-related debts, and so your liabilities were substantially decreased. Okay, so on page 106, 107, as I mentioned at the opening, that we were, we did audit procedures required by government auditing standards. These procedures go beyond just financial numbers, include internal control of financial reporting and compliance with laws, regulations, policies of the county. This report had no findings or questioned costs. The, the next slide shows the major grants that the county had last year, of both federal and state. And there were no findings in the audit of those grants. On the management level, required by rules of the audit general, in this report, it did not contain any findings or recommendations for either the board or any of the constitutional officers. There also were no prior-year findings. Finally, on page 120, is that we're required to perform audit procedures regarding the board and the county's investment in public funds, E911, E911, grant compliance, clerk's court-related budgetary compliance, clerk's compliance with state board performance standards, clerk's alimony and child support payments administration. We performed appropriate procedures and had no findings regarding these issues. But kind of overall, the county was significantly stronger at the end of the year with its reserves, and the beginning of the year had no report of findings, either regarding any of the compliance areas of the county. Be pleased to answer any questions of the board.
Are we getting the check for the $33 million?
That's all you heard.
I explained that to me, Mr. Powell, because I don't know, that whole FRS thing is like pie in the sky.
Listen, I wanted to comment on that as well. Let me say something. I, I've followed these for many, many years. Twenty years ago, there were huge arguments going on in Tallahassee, probably they'll remember some of that too, but this FRS number isn't a number that you control. It's clearly being controlled out of Tallahassee, and it goes up and it goes down. The last, what, 10 years, it's been an enormous liability for every county, maybe longer than that. But I saw it climb and climb and climb, and it was frightening, and it's gotten everyone's attention every year, but when I opened this thing up and saw this $33 million reduction, I don't remember when this has happened. So we need to throw a parade or something, a party, because I don't know that you'll ever see this again.
The state legislature establishes contribution rates, let's say they establish them. Then they have this actuary firm do a study, okay? The study encompasses how much money we have, how much we think we're going to earn on it, of all of the people in the system, how long are they going to live, and then are they going to start receiving benefits, and what inflation rate's going to be. So they do one every year, and then these numbers just do like that. And, and I think probably, and they'll never admit it, they probably overcharged in prior years, and so now they're kind of bringing it back. But you and every member pays whatever the required contribution rates are, and the liability, and honestly, reportedly Florida's one of the stronger systems, but the liability will probably never be, you know, I think they'll send you a bill for it, but it's, but it should, if it goes down that much, the contribution rate should have been adjusted. I'm not sure if anyone asked that, but it would be a good thing. If you're ever at a meeting somewhere, just stand up and say, "What in the world did that happen, and our rates still went up?"
Well, maybe you could explain this to me, because we contribute whatever they say we got to contribute.
Yes.
How is there a deficit? If you're contributing what they tell you you got to contribute, how is that?
Okay, so the next year, they do a study and say, "Well, you still didn't contribute enough, the age of people is going up, and the people are living longer, and we didn't do as good in the stock market." So, so, but then again, you know, that's the reason they rate rates, that if it goes the way it did this one year, why didn't they decrease rates?
Well, I just, I don't, like I said, it's pie in the sky to me, but if you're paying close to half your payroll in pension and retirement, I don't understand how there's ever a deficit there.
And the worst thing, I'm glad you didn't ask me about OPEB, but, so what OPEB is, you pay, you decide what the health insurance plan's going to be every year for employees. There's a law that says retired employees can stay on the plan, contribute whatever the payment is, but then OPEB, there's, they say there is, and it's a study, actuaries have to lobby for both of these issues, so, so they do a study, and they say, "Yes, but you know, your current employees are getting older, and so just keeping them on the plan is going to cost you in the future." And so they say you have an OPEB liability, but, but you're never going to pay that, and if the rates go too high for insurance, you're going to do something to change your plan. And so it's, again, it's these people in, I think it's New Jersey is where GASP is, and, like I say, you know, GASP is the one that issues all these rules, and I remember, used to not be a GASP, and then there was one in GASP. 34 was the biggest thing that was going to do everything, and now they're up to 110, and so they keep cranking out GASP's. So that's what both of these are.
I saw an argument. Anybody else have any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to have a comment on my last entirely budget, I pledged that the audit report.
Yes.
And no findings, and you telling us about FRS and how you're preparing to log decisions, that meant a lot to me.
That made it.
And I think that, that means I'll be leaving the county in good hands and in good standing with the gentleman's head, and it makes me proud, I've said to you previously, that how you, how these numbers are crunched, and how, how you and your company crush all these numbers, that's way beyond my scope. And, but everything that I hear is good, and I really appreciate that.
Yeah, and I'd just say that Swanee County, over the years, hasn't always been in this good shape, but you, with conservative practice, and you know, it's the board that basically does that, has built up to this level of reserves, and it's very, very commendable. It's kind of, and it's hard to do and maintain in this environment or whatever environment we're in, so it's, it's, it's very commendable on all of the constitutional officers, then the board and the management.
Mr. Chairman, one more thing I'd like to say. I wish more people, when it was in here, to hear, out in the community, to hear where we stand as a small rural county. You know, you'll find, and I hear you, all of you. Thank you, Mr. Powell.
Thank you, Mr. Powell. Appreciate you coming forward.
Thank you for that. Very much so. As always, thank you.
At this time, we'll move on to item number 10, 5:05. We're soon thereafter, as the matter can be heard, on a public hearing regarding special permit with SP 22-08-01. Mary Solak, Squire, authorized agent and property owner Linda Lee, be granted a special permit under section 14.11 of the Swanee County Land Development Regulations for essential service, 210-foot monopole, communications tower, and associated equipment. Ms. Meeks.
At this particular, at this particular time in the public hearing, if anybody anticipates that they may give testimony before the board this evening, would you all stand to be sworn? Ryan? Do each of you swear or affirm that the testimony you'll give before the board will be the truth to help you guide?
I do.
Thank you. As you approach the podium, would you please state your name and address clearly for the record?
Mr. Chairman, board members, the application that you have before you tonight is a special permit request, number SP-22-08-01. It's a special permit request to construct a 210-foot monopole, communication tower, and associated equipment. Ms. Mary Solak is the authorized agent for the property owner, which is Linda Lee, revocable trust, living trust. Property is located in an agricultural one zoning district, located in section nine, township five south, range 15 east. More specifically, this would be located at the northwest intersection of County Road 137 and 216th Street, which most everybody knows as Market Road. The site plan that's been included with the application shows the setbacks on the property, the two closest setbacks being the eastern property line, which adjoins County Road 137, and that shows a 250-foot setback. The other property line being the southern property line, which is along 216th Street, shows a 1,277-foot setback. street, shows a one thousand two hundred and seventy-seven foot setback from the tower location. The engineering provided with the application and their request shows that the tower will maintain its required self-collaps distance, and it's shown on the plan. Documentation submitted with the application shows that equipment will come off of an existing tower that's located approximately, maybe a little over one mile to the east in a straight line if you measure. It's located a little south and east of the proposed site. New equipment will be installed on this proposed tower site, and it would be built for co-location. If the board so chooses to approve this request, it would require the adoption of a resolution. Resolution contains the standard language that the board has required on other similar special permit tower construction approvals as a condition that the county would be granted co-location use of the tower and no charge for purposes of locating emergency communication equipment if requested at a minimum height of ninety feet. So, that is pretty standard across the board with any other special permit request the boards have. We included that in this proposed resolution. So, if your intent for the board would be to approve the request, you would adopt that resolution. If there's any conditions that the board so chooses to add, we would add those and have this approved by the county attorney. I don't have anything to add at this time. Ms. Mary Solak is present to present her request. She can kind of go over a little bit more detail in the location of the equipment off of one tower to the other. I don't want to misspeak and say something that might get me in trouble. So, at this time, I don't have anything else to add, and I would enter the file to the record.
Thank you. We'll take the file that is composite exhibit one.
Are there any questions at this time? Seeing none, we'll locate a forward public comment. Thank you, Mr. Meeks.
Thank you.
Name of the person.
Mary Solak, one twenty-one, South Orange Avenue, Suite fifteen hundred, Orlando, Florida. I am legal counsel for PeakNet, who is the tower applicant on this particular application. With me tonight is Christopher Bernardo and Andrea Whitson, who are both with PeakNet. We, as Mr. Meeks has indicated, we meet all of the objective performance criteria in your code for approval of this cell tower. Do you have any specific questions that I can answer for you at this time?
Just out of curiosity, Ms. Solak?
Yes.
The tower you're vacating, is that PeakNet's tower, too, and this is a better site? Or just?
No. My client, PeakNet, is a tower owner, vertical real estate, and their customers are the wireless carriers. The proposed customer for this particular tower is AT&amp;T. AT&amp;T is located on that other tower that is owned by a national tower company that's one point one miles to the southeast. And they are, AT&amp;T has made a decision that they want to move from that tower to this tower.
Okay.
And I don't represent AT&amp;T, so I can't speak about what their motivations are or...
I understand. I was, I was looking at the current coverage versus the planned coverage. It looked like it would increase it as well as maintain and some of the...
It will. I did bring additional hard copies of those coverage maps. If you all want to see them side by side to see the increase, I'm happy to pass those out if that would be helpful to you.
I was just asking a question of curiosity.
Any other questions?
I'd love an opportunity to rebut any citizen commentary that there might be on this particular application. Thank you. It's really nice to follow a positive audit.
Just one second, sir. Are you speaking?
No, I was just thinking since you take your original statement.
Yes, sir. If you want to come to the podium, please.
Sure.
I just have a question, so if I have to spare me for that.
Yes, sir. I'll swear you in for that.
Okay. Steven Fontana, one twenty, no, two one one eight one, one forty-fourth Street, five oh four.
All right, thank you. Would you raise your hand?
Yes, sir.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you give before the board this evening will be the truth to help you got?
I do.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Just one question. Is there an environmental impact statement associated with power regarding radiation?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All wireless carriers are required to comply with FCC standards on emissions. And the FCC regulates that. The carriers do their audits, and FCC does compliance audits. We haven't, we're not required to do an environmental impact statement on the radiation, because that is regulated by the FCC. And there are, like I said, there's compliance audits. And all of the wireless carriers have very robust regulatory departments that ensure that they are maintaining their FCC emissions limitations. And I have, and I always have to, I don't like to say this, I would prefer that it come from your attorney. The Telecom Act does prevent local governments from considering the environmental impacts of towers as they make their length use decisions. And that's because the FCC has just taken that jurisdiction away from you.
We've been through the drill before.
Anyone else wishing to speak on this matter? Is it about my trees again?
You swear or affirm that the testimony you give before the board this evening will be the truth to help you got?
I do.
Thank you. State your name and address for the record.
Moses Stuffer, one four five eight one hundred second. And yes, exactly about that camouflage tire. All right. First I've heard, I'm ignorant about a lot. First I've heard that we can't consider it radiation factor. Thank you, Steve. But still, the cosmetic thing, the aesthetics, they're putting these things in here to make money. We're gonna have them all over our county. And I want to remind y'all, in the county, we could, y'all, it's probably too late again for this. And y'all've had time in the past between the last one y'all let in, the ugly one. Y'all could've changed y'all's policy, our policies. And so, I object to y'all letting another ugly tire come in. Thank you, Mr. Moses. Anyone else wishing to speak at this time? Seeing none, I will close public comment. Is there any more discussion? Seeing none, do we have a motion to adopt the special permit request?
Mr. Chairman, I ask a question. This is in South and in your district, so before we, you asked for us to make a motion, just want to get your thoughts on it.
All in favor?
Fair enough. If you're in favor with it, I would move to approve it.
Motion by Commissioner Land, second by Commissioner Fleming. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Same side? Motion carries. Are we already done? Item number eleven, Adam McCook, Health and Safety Officer.
Good evening, Commissioners. I was coming today to give everybody an update on the county safety problem, or the current safety that the county's doing right now. But first, I'd like to share a near miss that we had on, now July nineteenth, during one of our normally scheduled board meetings at five thirty-eight, Swanee County Fire Rescue dispatched a one hundred and eightieth street for a large tree down. The tree was really big, so the guys on the truck was deliving the tree to help get some of the tree cleaned up before the county could get there with the tractor and move it. And we had a twenty-one-year-old employee cutting a tree. He was cutting at eye level. Something grabbed his attention. He looked away and was not anticipating the fall of Saul, and Saul come down on top of his leg. Luckily, the employee was wearing issued chainsaw chaps, and, you know, it saved his leg, saved his life, and, you know, saved his career. So, I kind of want to touch base on what we're doing in safety in the county and these steps that we put in place to keep our employees safe. First, I'd like to talk about Swanee County Mine. It's regulated by MSHA, which is the Mine Safety and Health Administration. It's a partner of the US Department of Labor. It governs every mine across the United States. Swanee County Mine falls under thirty CFR Part forty-six. They're required to have two inspections by MSHA every year. MSHA comes in, they inspect the mine, they'll write citations for non-S and S and S citations. In the last four years, we've had four non-S and S citations. And they're not really that serious of a citation. It's usually errors on documents and stuff that can be changed or minor stuff that's not immediate danger to life and health. And they can usually be resolved while the inspector's on site and a warning fee issued. So, we've had one S and S citation, and that was taken care of. So, we haven't had none more in a couple years. MSHA also awarded our Swanee County Mine with six thousand six hundred and twenty hours upon no injuries. So, that was a big accomplishment for that. They did that in two thousand twenty. Since then, we've had no more injuries or lost time with employees there. Our miners are required to go through annual training every year to be issued a five thousand twenty-three form, which allows that miner to work on that mine for one year. Each year, they have to get recertified and get issued another five thousand twenty-three form. So, some of the training that myself and Jerry West and other people do with the mine, we do first aid CPR, firefighting, fire extinguisher training. And we do site-specific hazards for our site with the hazards that may encounter in our mine. Next, our public works, we've implemented high-visibility traffic vests, rain suits, and chainsaw chaps for our guys. We provide them all the safety equipment they need to do their job safe and return home the way they come to work. We do daily inspections of our county vehicles and county equipment, along with yearly DOT inspections on a lot of our commercial vehicles. We've updated our tractors. We've got cabs for the guys, keep them cool, also to keep debris from flying up on them, hitting them, and hurting them while they're mowing or trimming trees on the side of the road. I know several years ago, we had an employee that had got poisoned ivy on an open cab tractor, and that employee was lost time for about a year with a severe reaction to poison ivy. So, you know, with updated equipment and stuff, we're giving our employees a better work environment. With fire rescue, we have a lot that goes into safety now. The state requires incident safety officer on a lot of your large scenes like structural fires, vehicle extrication, special operations, hazardous materials, and stuff like that. I obtained my state incident safety officer two thousand twenty-one through the state fire marshal's office. We have a safety committee at the fire department, just myself and seven other personnel. We've worked to get ready for an upcoming audit. We have with the state fire marshal's office to be compliant with their standards through sixty-nine A, sixty-two, and Florida Statute six thirty-three, which is the fire prevention code. We've applied for multiple grants for safety equipment. Recently this year, we've applied for a grant for some battery-operated extrication equipment. And we just applied for a grant through the fire marshal's office for thermal imaging cameras to update our ten-year-old cameras that we have. With them two grants, if we're lucky to get them, will save the county approximately seventy thousand dollars in grant money. In two thousand twenty-one, we were able to get a grant for bulletproof vests to fill in our ambulances for our personnel to wear during high-risk incidents that we respond to with law enforcement and to be prepared if we ever have an shooter event at a event here or in the school system. Our department also has three tactical medics that respond with SWAT teams. We provided them with the necessary safety equipment to keep them safe in them high-risk situations. We're getting new fire gear. Cancer's becoming a killer of firefighters now, so we're taking steps to get gear to protect our guys from cancer. We've got a great system that is put into our suits to keep the carcinogens and stuff off our firemen. We now have extractor and washer, a push fire decon to where our guys can clean their equipment immediately, come back on fire, and shower within an hour to get all the carcinogens off of them. And then the fire department's also doing live scans, physicals on our staff, on our staff each year that's in compliance with sixty-nine A, sixty-two, Florida administrative code. I appreciate the support of the board, Mr. Harris, all the department heads for, you know, being proactive on safety. This just summarizes a small part of our safety in the county. Safety is not, it's not about one person. It must be done for the team. I say we have a good team here. And I'm very passionate about safety. You know, I want everybody to come to work and go home the way they come. So, in closing, I'd like to ask permission to update our safety policy and also form a safety committee with some department heads or representatives from other departments, so we can get an idea from everybody and go through our safety manual and update it. Anybody have any questions?
I appreciate the safety, the lookout for the safety on the guys and employees, and a real good presentation there. I appreciate it. What do you need us to do, Adam? Did you say?
I want a check for two hundred thousand dollars.
We like it.
Check out where that chainsaw hit that church. I mean, that man was wearing it. And you can see it didn't go through. I mean, that's, they just look like they're that tough, but that's pretty tough material right there.
I'm basically just asking permission from the board. I don't know what the appropriate procedure is, but, you know, to update our safety manual. It's been quite some time since it's been updated. We've got some new equipment and new ways of doing things. And, you know, I'd like to have a safety committee, you know, to get department heads or representatives from other departments to come in and, you know, we approach it from all angles.
I don't have a problem.
Are you, just the committee, the committee together than where we all come back with the recommendations we brought back to the board for that? Does that need to be handled?
All right, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Adam. Thank you, Ms. Meeks. Appreciate it. We didn't call it because of my hand.
I just want to add that when Adam says that he's passionate about safety, he's not joking. He's, he's very passionate about it. He does a great job for us. But not only us, he's, he works as much in the Harris Department, Sheriff's Office, and everything else. Anytime there's a complaint, incident of any kind, any kind of accident in the county, he's got to go do incident reports and pictures and everything else to make sure everything's done the right way. And he's probably one of the most hated people in our department, you know, whatever, as likable as Adam is, because he makes people, you know, stick to his, to his, you know, to rules and what they need to do to make sure that they're protected. And not only protect themselves, but protect the county at the same time. So, I just wanted to publicly acknowledge how good a job he does do and how hard he works for, for not only our department, but for everybody else in the county, because he really does do a great job at it.
Agree with him.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I just, Commissioner, please.
I appreciate what he does also. He kind of gets, gets like us commissioners. He gets back the short end of the stick sometimes when there's a resident that has a problem with something that happened on county property. He's kind of the investigator that checks it out, see if it's true. And obviously, if it's true, then we're liable. But there's times when something may not be quite as that was presented. And I just, you know, we always want to do the right thing by the people. But we also, we got to look out for the county. And I just appreciate him doing that part.
Very good. Anybody else? Any Commissioner Adams? Any county attorney Adams?
Mr. Chairman, I have one item that I do need to address just briefly. At the last board meeting, I recommend... At the last board meeting, I recommended, and the board authorized, to pay an invoice to CSX in an amount of $83,432.93. However, I have to report to you tonight that I failed to follow your board's action. As a result, a different set of circumstances has occurred with regard to that invoice. Why, frankly, I was angry with myself and was really, really didn't want to go into the consideration and recommendation of that particular, paying that invoice in full. So, because of the totality of the circumstances that had occurred, you know, surrounding the payment of the invoice. So, what I kind of did is I just kind of ignored the board's directive to go ahead and pay it, and I went and had further discussions with CSX, which discussions I really wouldn't call negotiation or cordial in the least. And I was able to resolve the matter from $83,000 down to $25,029.88. And the problem is, at this juncture, I've already gotten a release from CSX for the invoice, and as part of our discussion, they agreed that there would be no further anything that happens out there past or future with CSX with regard to the rail line, and I got the release for that. I also have also asked the clerk's office and received the funds, and I forwarded them to CSX at this time. So procedurally, what I'm asking you to do is to please indulge me and ratify my actions on behalf of the board, going back to them and getting a lesser sum, but I have to do that and need the ratification so that it'll be correct in the record.
Well, I was pretty tickled when you called me and asked me, could we write a check for this? And I was like, well, yeah, what kind of question is that? Go ahead. So I was pretty pleased with that, Mr. Harris. So, thank you. Yes. Do you want, Mr. Chairman, do you want to be specific on the language you wanted this ratification?
No, I just want to make sure that you ratify my actions.
We accept that, but I'll say, I think he, our attorney, also knew how we expressed our displeasure with that amount. What did we say? We was going to tell you how many years to pay, and they sent it to us, so, yeah.
Well, the other good thing about this is that, if you remember, I had mentioned that years ago, they came through and did service to a bunch of crawl scenes and then sent us a bill six or eight months or a year later, and I argued with them for a long time. And we went ahead and budgeted the money, forty-something thousand dollars, but we never paid it. So when this bill came, that's the money that was sitting aside all these years, waiting to see if we were going to get into a lawsuit with them or paying that. But now that everything is resolved with CSX, they don't own the land anymore, they were able to use the funds that we had sitting there, they just, twenty-something thousand dollars. So we didn't have to find any other money.
The only request I have is the excess money that we didn't have to pay.
Mr. Chairman, I don't want to make a comment about that.
I'm not even going to comment.
I'm just going to say no.
Very good job.
But I do need a motion to ratify the actions, my actions, with CSX with regard to the invoice. That's all.
Except the adjustment payment.
How do you want to say that?
Do just that, with the adjustment payment from $83,432.93 down to $25,029.88.
I would move to make that adjustment on the reduced amount to CSX.
Motion by Commissioner Lynn.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hale. All in favor, right?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Let's just carry you down.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Revett. Are there any additional agenda items? Public concerns or comments? Anybody wishes? No takers. You already had your turn. If y'all fixed it, I wouldn't have seen that. It says in here, one trip to the podium.
Yeah, but if y'all fixed my concerns before, I would be back.
I'm just fun and mean.
Still Moses Clipper, 1458102, Pat. By chance, I was doing some personal business, and I come across an ex-employee at the deputy sheriff, or the sheriff's office, and he'd been in the public sector for quite some time. He was, like I said, his ex. We got in a conversation, and one, at least by him, by his description, and he referred even some people in the upper ranks that have the same issue of, it sounds like we as a county are not providing our deputies and some of our law enforcement officers enough life insurance, or not life insurance, health insurance benefits. And I did a little bit of scratch looking, I mean, y'all got the absolute numbers down, but it appears that we pay about $700 a month for each deputy and other law enforcement officers, and they have to pretty much match that for themselves, and for the kids, they got to add another $700 or so, and for the spouse, they got to add another $700. So they're going to be paying up to $2,300 something dollars a month to insure their families through our insurances. That's kind of high, you know? When you take even that 45, I think we had, if you take that and deduct that 23 a month from their salaries, that's tight, you know? I don't care who you are, it's tight. So, of course, I'd like to offer a solution. This goes way back to when behavioral health meridian came in, and again, I know very little of the absolute details, but I think they're getting a pretty free rent space, right? I objected to that initially, and I'm all in favor. We need, I mean, the drug is killing our country, and our county is no different or exceptional, but I looked into them a little bit, and they've got salaries up to half a million dollars a year, you know, in that organization. I mean, none of us up here, not even Mr. Harris, is making that much money. So I think there's room, wiggle room there to, I mean, there's smarter people than me on the money and all and legalities, but I think just by looking at that, this overview, our deputies aren't getting a fair shake, and I know insurance is out of this world. I never dreamed it'd get like it is, but I think that's one of the primary reasons that we're not, by talking to this young man and then referencing to a couple others, that nobody argued that, that that's something we need to look at. We truly want to retain good law enforcement here, you know? So I've probably said enough on that, and the, that's really all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moses. Is anyone else wish to speak? I thought Hillary was speaking.
How you guys doing? Can y'all take one of the passes down?
Yes.
That guy's got a tall one.
Name and address for the record, please.
Marshal Beck, 12609 State Road 51, my boat. I'm coming here tonight, guys. Back on July the 3rd, we had a good friend of ours got hurt in a boating accident down on the Swan River, and he lost his leg, and he's been through a lot, the family's been through a lot, and, you know, a lot of people don't realize what all goes behind this, but I know, you know, he had to be lifelighted, and praise the Lord, we still got him, guys. I mean, he was close to death there, and thank the Lord, we still got him and all. But, you know, I sat back, and I was at the house, I mean, he's a good friend of mine, and his wife is on the chamber board with me, and I'm going to come in president behind her next year, and she has done a phenomenal four years with the service for our chamber, and she's donated her free time, and, you know, the Skinner's go way back, and they've done a lot for this community that people don't realize. But I got up one morning, and I said, you know, I need to try to do something for this family, and so I called a group of people together, and we met, we met in a room somewhere, it's about 25 of us, and they all come, and they listened to what I had to say, and so we all come up with, you know, we felt like we wanted to help the family a little bit, so we put our heads together and said, what can we do? So we decided to get some bands together, we got four bands together, and we calling this fundraiser, Rockin' For A Reason, and there is a reason behind it, guys, you know what I mean? And we're just trying to help a friend in our community right here, and people don't realize what a prosthetic tone costs, and it's not insured, and what a helicopter ride costs, lifeline costs out there, and, you know, people say, well, you know, people got plenty of money, but they don't realize what the backend of all this is. There's going to be a lot of benefit bills right here. So we put this thing together, and I got with the spirit of the Swan out there, and they said that they would donate the venue, and so we called some bands together. One is to tribute trifecta, and that's the Doobie Brothers, 38 Special, and Santana. And then Harry Days is going to close it out for the night. It's going to be about six hours worth of concert going on. We're going to have a big auction inside there, there's going to be appetizers throughout the night for everybody, and then we close it out that night with a big fire rocket. So we was trying to figure things out. I figured we'd come up with a hundred dollar ticket. We know that's kind of outrageous, but, you know, you can go to the grocery store and that and come up with two bags for a hundred dollars, you know? So we got the ticket set at a hundred dollars, and guys, all the proceeds, 100%, I know what people want to say, but 100% of this goes to the Skinner family, okay? And it's not going to be nothing going to this park out there. They're not receiving anything. We've already raised the money to pay for the bands, that's already taken care of. I hadn't went to any businesses, or we hadn't went to any businesses in this community and asked for any help. This is all an individual type thing. If you want to go, you buy a ticket. If you don't want to go, you don't buy anything, you know what I mean? But there has been some people, there has been some businesses that wanted to donate some money to it, you know what I mean? But no business has been approached in this community, so it's nothing we have stepped out of sight right here that, hey, you've done it for them, and you haven't done it for these people here. That's not like that. This is just something that the friends wanted to do for the family, and I just want to get everybody involved in it if you can, and just get it out into the network out there and let people know. Word of mouth is the best thing. We had a meeting Thursday on it, and we started texting people, and my goodness, we sold 60 tickets after that, you know what I mean? So there is only 350 tickets going to be sold there. That's all we can put inside of the music hall right there. So once the 350 is done, there'll be no more tickets. Nobody else will be able to get into there. But people are coming from all over, Jacksonville, Gainesville, I mean, they're just hitting us up, because they do business with the Skinner family too, and, but anyway, I just wanted to bring this in front of the board today and just tell you what a fine job y'all do to start with, okay, guys? And I appreciate it, and thank y'all for the night.
Thank you. We appreciate what you're doing there, and I want to say thank you. Everybody buy a hundred dollar ticket.
I hope you do. This is third trip. My memory. The same Moses Clipper, same address. That life scan, it sounds like I'm going two different ways here, but that life scan for all the employees for the sheriff's department, I don't oppose it at all, but I think the company that's providing it is taking advantage of our government agency. I would solicit to have the same test done for $135. They're wanting 410, so I just asked that we take, look at that, see if we can get a better price on that same service.
Anyone else wish to speak? With that, we want Mr. Harris.
Commissioners, I'm just going to give you a quick update. We sent a letter to Windstream regarding the relocation of that fire rock table on County Route 137, and gave them the statutory 30 days to have that relocation completed. For at least three weeks, we didn't hear anything back from them, and then a week ago, a little over a week ago, we finally received an email that said that they were working on it, and that engineers were involved, and I responded and said, well, that's great, but we need to know when the job is going to be completed, because we've got a contractor and subcontractors that need to revitalize the schedule and do that. Never got a response back to that question. I started calling yesterday, called again today, sent another email saying, you know, I made this request last week, what's the response here? I finally got one of these automatic responses that says I'm out of the office, and I'll be returning all this phone number. I've called the phone number, no one answered, no one returns the call, and I'm just sharing that with you as an update, because we still have a contractor that needs to be back out there to complete the project. Thankfully, we're not under as much pressure as we believe we were going to need to have that thing completed. So I feel relatively confident that it's going to get relocated, but it hasn't been done yet, and I wanted to share that with you in case you have questions from anyone calling and saying, okay, y'all stop. You know, the project's out here. Everything's just stopped and waiting. If we don't get a response sometime soon, I would recommend that we have, Mr. Revett, go ahead, just take whatever action that the two of us can come up with that you think will make a difference in trying to get this thing moving again, because we can't sit here and death number. That statutory 30 days is ended now. I think it was yesterday?
Yesterday.
It was yesterday. My hope is to get a response soon, but during those 30 days, in my opinion, they could have had their engineering done, or whatever else they needed to, was scheduled to have this work completed by now, and I haven't got a response yet on that until further. So that's where we are.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Revett, what enlightened me a little bit. I know that, I've heard bits and pieces, the line is in a permitted location, but it is now in the way of the infrastructure that we're needing to put in place there. So what, under the letter of the law, what are all of our options?
The options are, we give them a 30-day notice. I mean, they've got a permit back around 2000, 2001, to be able to put it in the right-of-way, you know, along there. So they have the appropriate permit to be able to do that. However, the right-of-way is our primary use, under our primary use. Anything that they can do is a secondary use. So if our primary use of it, they get in the way with their secondary use, they're required to move their facility. And so we've gone along here and, you know, speaking with them, you know, trying to, I don't know exactly the particulars of where it is.
I can tell you what the particulars are. Here's what happened.
I was the guy that fell.
Well, I'm going to tell you right now, they went out there, there was a clear area there, they could have gone to the backside of that and installed their cable, and they didn't do it. That would have left all of the other area between there and the pavement for any additional future utilities to install without a problem. I'm of the opinion they hired a subcontractor or contractor to do the installation. They went dead down the center of that, so we can't go in there, the contractor can with his excavator now and dig that out and put our lines in, and that's where the problem is. We had a conference call with them 45 days ago, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
We were testing the chairman's blood pressure medication on that day, but I'm going to tell you, we had a long, exhaustive conversation. We eliminated any excuses, made it very clear what the problem was and what the solution was back then. And then we ultimately had Mr. Revett send the letter, so we finally got a response. And a part of the response was that apparently there was some confusion in what the chairman and I heard back in the other day that we had the conference call, but having said all of that, I'm ever the optimist, and I believe that it's going to get done, we just need it done sooner than later. I shared that with you only so that you know, in case someone's questioning you about, well, why did y'all start this project and it stopped? That's the That's the reason, that's the only reason, because otherwise the contractor could have the thing completed by now and then sitting waiting for this fiber optic to be relocated. That's the rest of the story.
Looking to be a little more enlightened.
Well, and I want to say on the conference call, we pretty much exhausted all options before we done it. And he's right, I needed some blood pressure medicine to get that done.
You realize when these things, types of things occur that there's, there's very little that we deal, that Mr. Revett and I deal with that has any resemblance to what happens in private sector? It's entirely different.
But we did the best we could and then it just, just evolved to this was the only option, so that's all we do. Please look.
Mr. Revett, anything to add?
Just sooner rather than later is, you know, how it needs to, needs to be addressed, but I'm confident in our position, you know, period, so.
Right, with that, Mr. Fleming, do you have anything to add?
No, I don't have anything.
I'll just go punch real quick, number one is if you don't realize by now there's an election, business up. I've been on every street corner in three counties, I feel like. But no, seriously, it's a, it's a right that we have and I ask everyone to please exercise that right regardless of who you support. People have fought, many generations have fought for our freedoms to be able to do this and on those battlefields, they was left there to give us the opportunity to do what we do and I, I take that very serious as, I realize all of you do because I know you take it serious because you're here participating in these meetings. A lot of us get frustrated on the big scale, on the national scale of what government is. To change the national scale, you have to start on the local scale, you change the locals. If you get it going right, it will change on the other hand. Trust me when I tell you this, but please, please pass the word and let's get out August twenty-third and exercise our right that we've been given. Like I say, Mr. Revett, thank you so much for working on that project, you put a lot of effort into it, Hillary and many others. Other than, that's all I got, other than, I don't know what the word is to use, but Mr. Chairman, you look mighty thankful tonight.
I'll take that as a compliment. I mean, compliment. Commissioner Lynn?
Oh, that's right, I really don't have much, I would thank Marcel and his team for doing what they're doing here for this family. I would like to see you continue this every year, raise some money for a foundation or a, you know, another family, hopefully we don't like incidents like that occurring, but, you know, that's, that's a heck of an event you've, I don't know, managed to put together there, I know it's a lot of work, a lot, a lot of good people behind you and I, I just, I appreciate it.
Well, it's, it's them too, you know what I mean, it's not just, I'm not just, it's my life. It's everybody, you know what I mean?
That's right, that's right, but no, that's, I know you guys have been working hard on that, I mean, that's, that's just awesome that we got folks like you in our community and, and, and the other folks that are, that are, that are helping you as well, that are volunteering so much of their time and resources to help others, that's, that's commendable.
Thank you, Commissioner Lynn. Commissioner?
I really don't have anything, just to echo you guys on putting this thing together, a lot of our work to organize something like that. But yeah, just, I always say it and I'll say it again, folks, we, Commissioner Stedman kind of touched on, there's things that goes on around this world that we don't know about to continue to pray for one another, lift each other up. You never know what person's sitting next to you is going through, so don't take nothing for granted and I'm thankful, again, I'll tell you guys this, we just went through a bunch of workshops and I was talking with my wife about this over the weekend. It's good to have a board, I'm, I'm just proud to be part of this board, every one of us. We, we have discussions, hard discussions, some things we joke about, but we do it in a way that we get business done and I don't ever want the community to think that, you know, this is just a big party up here for us because we take this serious and if you don't believe it, I mean, just, if you see these numbers and the things we have to look at and our decisions we have to make and we're not always happy with them, we just have to do the best that we can. And I'm just proud to be part of this board, I tell you guys, I'm thankful.
Thank you. Well, there's a lot that goes into it, if you don't believe me, you just see the mileage on my pickup truck, I mean, and my gas bill every week for, for what, what goes on, but it's, it's a lot of work and I know we all do, appreciate everyone, I appreciate all of y'all coming and, and taking part in your government and Marshall and Hillary and all y'all, I appreciate, appreciate you putting this together. That's, that's real, real nice. But other than that, I don't have anything else, I, I just need a motion to adjourn. Motion by Commissioner Lynn, second by, motion by Commissioner Lynn, second by Commissioner Stedman, all in favor of?